Good evening. It is 6:02 on February 28, 2023. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to know for the record, this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody is recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. Seeing none, next item, I want to know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting, I myself, Bill Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, Board Member Joe Fisher is away this evening. All right, if everybody, if those willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We're going to, we're going to wait on minutes until next week, which will bring us to item number four, which is to consider approval of the request of South Shore Conservatory for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for South Shore Conservatory Summer Music Festival Planning Reception to be held on Sunday, March 12, 2023, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM. Do you believe we have Sharon with us, Steve, who's going to take the lead on it?
Yes.
Sharon, how are you?
I'm John.
Good evening. Sharon, if you could just state your name and if you're a Hingham resident, your address or your position if you're not a resident.
Okay, my name is Sharon Rowland. I don't live in Hingham, but I do work there. I live in Plymouth.
Excellent, well, welcome. You want to tell us a little about your, your request this evening?
Sure, so we, we have this summer music festival, which happens in July. It's about, it's almost three weeks of kids who come in for music instruction from Asia Talk in the morning until about 2:30 in the afternoon. And, and we have a terrific team of faculty members. And what we want to do on March 12th is kind of have a little bit of a preview of what music that they will be playing and learning this summer. The, the Director of the Program, Eric LePrade, will be there and he, he will be just informing board members, patrons, you know, and anybody, parents who, who want to know what's going to happen. So we just want everyone to feel relaxed and we'll just offer them a glass of wine.
Excellent. Sharon, this is, um, did you have this event, I know you, you do, um, a lot of great events at the Conservatory throughout the year. Did you hold this event last year?
We did not hold this specific event, but we would have held similar type events, yes.
Okay, excellent.
I think the, the next one on the agenda, the Perform-a-thon one on April 12th in the evening, we did hold that last year.
Great, thank you. And Sharon, how many, uh, participants do you anticipate attending this event?
Um, well, we were kind of hoping for about between 30 and 40, but the way things are going, we're probably only going to have about 25.
Okay.
Because a lot, a lot of people are away. They've, you know, left snowy Massachusetts for sunny Florida.
All right, and I want to note that the Police Department did review this request and had no, uh, expressed no concerns to us regarding it. Let me turn to my colleagues, see if Liz has any questions.
I don't have any questions. I reviewed the application. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or concerns about this agenda item? Seeing none, I would make a motion to approve the request of South Shore Conservatory for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for the South Shore Conservatory's Summer Music Festival Planning Reception to be held on Sunday, March 12, 2023, from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm in eyes, while the motion carries. Sharon, stay right there, I'm going to call on you again in about a minute here. Next item, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of South Shore Conservatory for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Perform-a-thon to be held on Saturday, April 1st, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So Sharon, you want to tell us a little bit about this event?
Sure, so that weekend, actually, on the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're having what we call a Perform-a-thon, which is just what it sounds. It's a marathon of all of our students performing. And we decided last year to try out something special for the adult students that we have. So we had a recital on Saturday, on, we have it on Saturday afternoon, evening, I should say, um, where student, adult students can just come and perform and they'll pay $50 and that goes towards our SSC fund. Uh, so it is a fundraiser and, and it's just kind of a cocktails and music type of evening.
Uh, and Sharon, you said that you, you did hold this event last year, correct?
Yes, we did.
And about how many people do you expect to attend?
Uh, we're probably looking at about 70.
Oh, great, excellent, okay. And I'd also note that the Police, I'm sorry.
We had that last, we had about 50 last year, so.
Great, and I know the Police Department also approved, uh, reviewed this request and had no concerns, uh, to notify us of. So Liz, do you have any questions?
No, no questions or concerns. Um, it's nice to see it expanding from the old location of just Barnes and Noble, so, that's nice to see. That's great, uh, but no, no concerns with the event.
Uh, do any members of public have any questions or comments on this, on this request? Do you want me to make the motion? I know you're not feeling that way.
No, that's okay.
Okay, but that, then I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of South Shore Conservatory for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Perform-a-thon to be held at the South Shore Conservatory on Saturday, April 1st, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
And I would second that motion. All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm in eyes, while the motion carries. All right, Sharon, good seeing you. Good luck with your events.
Great, thanks a million.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the petition from National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,660 feet of 4-inch gas main in High Street and 365 feet of 2-inch gas main in French Streets. I see JR Frye here, but do we have a representative from National Grid?
Doesn't look like she's online yet.
Didn't look like she's online. All right, um, obviously JR, we need the applicant here, so I'm going to defer this agenda item to maybe later in the evening till we can see Ms., Ms. Maroni. So that takes us to item number seven, which is, which is to consider approval of the petition from New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T, to install and maintain telecommunications equipment on the existing poles located near 44 and 136 Fort Hill Street. See Representative at the microphone, good evening, sir.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Edward Pare, P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here representing New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which operates as AT&amp;T. Uh, so AT&amp;T has been proposing and installing these small cell facilities. I don't know if Hingham has dealt with these at all, uh, through the grant of location process, but back about a year or so, or a year, more than a year now, uh, we entered into a license agreement, master license agreement with the Hingham Municipal Light Plant. These are the first two cell sites that AT&amp;T is proposing in Hingham, uh, through that license agreement. We basically use existing utility poles. If they need to be replaced, we replace them in coordination with the light plant. The, uh, equipment consists of a pole top antenna, uh, which is a cylinder-type antenna. It's two feet tall. Uh, it's mounted on the top of the pole with a one-foot bracket. Uh, there are cables that run to an equipment cabinet, so all of the electronics is in the equipment cabinet. In this instance, we're looking to do, uh, two installations. One is near 44 Fort Hill Road, uh, Fort Hill Street. The other is near 136. They're basically identical, except the, the location at 44 will actually replace the pole, uh, in coordination with the light plant and do the installation. Uh, the size of the boxes, size of the antennas, otherwise all identical. We'll use the existing pole at 136, uh, Fort Hill Street, uh, and we'll just, you know, attach to what's there and all of the equipments, it's all of the equipment, wires, uh, streetlights, if they're on the pole, will be moved to the new pole by the Municipal Light Plant. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We did provide a packet with the plans, photo simulations, compliance with the radio frequency emission standards promulgated by the FCC, and a couple of coverage maps. With that, I'll take any questions.
Great, well, we'll thank you, appreciate your presentation. So you're going to install, uh, two of these on two different poles, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and, um, my understanding is you've already got approval from HMLP, the light plant, for this?
Yes, they have to give us approval to use the poles. They gave us licenses, you also have those in your packet.
Great. What's the, um, you, you said, and you said they're about two feet long, the, the, these additional poles. What's the range that they cover in terms of, um, yeah, I'm just kind of curious as to?
Yeah, not a lot. Uh, depending on the terrain, depending on foliage, uh, we're typically looking at about a quarter mile, maybe a third of a mile. These two, I did do a quick drive-by before I came in this evening. These are about a half a mile apart. Coverage is pretty spotty, uh, along that roadway, so, yeah, I'm sure everybody adjusts to, you know, when they're going to drop calls and so forth. Uh, but let me just, the antenna itself is two feet, so I just want to be clear, the, you know, that's mounted on the top of the wooden pole, so the antenna itself is a two-foot cylinder that goes on the top. The pole at 136 will remain there, we'll just put the bracket and the antenna on the top.
Okay, um, and I, I guess, and I guess these have been problem areas identified by customers and AT&amp;T has said, hey, we have some, lack of a better term, dead zones in here and drop coverage?
Drop coverage, you know, that's, the cell coverage is not up to snuff, uh, doesn't, you know, provide what the customers are looking to do. And when I looked at the coverage maps, it does look pretty spotty down there, so, you know, it'll get good coverage. The other thing, the other thing about these small cells is they provide capacity, so it offloads some of the traffic on the bigger sites, the full sites, which have nine or 12 antennas. So it alleviates the burden, I mean, the, the network is stressed, everybody's using the, uh, the network for all sorts of things, but, so this will offload some of that traffic and improve signal at the other locations also.
Great, thank you. Liz, do you have any questions?
Um, just to add on to that, do you see the need, um, for these based on new customers? You know, additional customers or mainly just kind of a, a service issue?
Yeah, I mean, we'd love to have new customers, so, well, that's certainly the business model, uh, but the network just isn't functioning up to the standard that AT&amp;T seeks, so, uh, you know, it'll be existing customers, hopefully, as, you know, the network and customer base grows, uh, it'll, you know, take care of the new customers also, so.
Great, um, and this might be a question for JR. Have you heard any concerns from residents with the installation?
No, I have not heard any concerns from residents regarding, uh, the installation.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, JR, do you have anything you want to add, um, to the Council's presentation?
No, I would just reiterate.
For the record, you're a JR Frye Town Engineer, correct?
Yes, sorry, JR Frye Town Engineer, but, um, I would just, uh, reiterate that the, um, these antenna meet, uh, radio frequency, um, criteria that's set by the FCC and are deemed to be safe, uh, for the locations and level of exposure that they're being installed in.
Great, thank you, JR. I also want to note that I am working with, um, um, the Town Administrator and, and responsive residents concerned about another cell provider, um, well, with respect to drop calls, impacts in economic development and safety concerns. So, um, I think the big thing, why we need these type of antennas is for public safety. And, you know, people need to call 911 or people need to make emergency phone calls, these would help. And if they've been identified by AT&amp;T as, as problem areas, it seems to me to be a good way to try to address those concerns. Um, so let me see if anybody from the public has any questions or comments about this agenda item.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Um, what's the timeline to get this done?
Uh, it, it typically takes a couple of months, uh, because we'll have additional permitting. This is just the grant of location.
Okay.
Uh, we'll need electrical permit and then we'll have to coordinate with the, with the light plant. It's not a long process, you know, we can get it up there with a bucket truck within a day to, you know, install the hardware and then they come in with electricity and so forth. So it won't be long duration, but it's, it's going to take some time to finish the internal approval process at AT&amp;T.
Okay, got it, and I, I see that the, um, any sort of construction or traffic details will be coordinated with the Police Department.
Correct, we did receive the memo from Mr. Frye, uh, dealing with some of the engineering concerns. We have no issues, we deal with, we deal with these all, you know, in every municipality with respect to traffic and, uh, and the like.
Okay.
Police detail, et cetera.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions about this, um, about this, uh, agenda item? I see none, I would make a motion to approve the grant of location request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, doing business as AT&amp;T, dated January 31st, 2023, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the approval decision with terms and conditions in the form attached here too.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm in eyes, while the motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of two license agreements with the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant for the installation of direct-current fast electric vehicle chargers at 226 Beale Street, which is Lynch Field, and 62 Water Street, also known as the Station Street Parking Lot. We have a couple of people here tonight to present, but let me turn it over to Assistant Town Administrator, Art Robert, to start us off.
Thank you, I just want to, uh, maybe provide a little bit of background here. About a year ago, uh, HMLP brought forward, for your consideration, a first set of licenses to install Level 2 electric vehicle chargers at three sites in, in Hingham. And it's exciting to say that, that they're installed and I, as a plug-in hybrid user, have benefited from them personally. And, uh, HMLP is back to continue, uh, seeking your support for installing additional electric vehicles as part of a broader set of sustainability initiatives. With that as background, I'll turn it over to, uh, Tom Morhan and Brianna Bennett of HMLP.
And Tom and Brianna, could you state, just state your, um, your name and position for the record?
Sure, my name is Brianna Bennett. I am the Sustainability Coordinator at the Hingham Municipal Light Plant.
And Tom Morhan, I'm the General Manager of Hingham Municipal Light Plant. I apologize, my, uh, camera is not working.
No problem, we can hear you fine, Tom. Who wants to, who wants to take the lead for HMLP here?
Brianna is going to take the lead, she has a short presentation.
Outstanding, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll share that and get started. So we are here to request permission, um, for the installation of two direct-current fast charging stations. Um, those are also known as DCFCs, also known as Level 3 charging. Um, these are the types of charging stations that take about 30 minutes to an hour to charge a vehicle. If it's looking for a full charge, it's probably closer to an hour, maybe two hours. Um, this is as opposed to the Level 2 charging stations that we installed last year in Hingham. Those stations, uh, take closer to two to four hours to charge a vehicle, um, fully charged closer to six to eight hours. So we have some images here that are included in the license agreement. I'm hoping the slides are advancing for you. Um, basically, we're, uh, we'd like to use the town parking spots at Lynch Field and at Water Street or the Station Street Parking Lot, um, for the DCFCs. So there'd be one station proposed for Lynch Field and two stations proposed for Station Street. What's different, um, here than the previous license agreements we've gone for is that you only need one parking spot for a fast charger, um, and as opposed to two parking spots for that charging. And that's because you can only charge one vehicle at a time at a DCFC, um, because it takes so much energy to power that charge essentially. So we did go through a permitting process for the Lynch Field location, um, because we would be taking up two parking spaces, as you could see on the slide before. One space is for charging, one space would be for that ADA accessibility lane, um, and that to be in compliance with the grant requirements from the state. Um, so we did get a special permit, A3 approved, and a site plan review with the planning board, um, and that was approved on January 23rd. And then there was no extra permitting required for Water Street. We would be looking at installing two stations with only one accessibility lane. Um, once the license agreements are approved, we will go ahead and purchase those DCFCs, hire someone to get the install completed, and complete the install and receive the grant funding by the end of summer in 2023. Um, and then our current network, as I mentioned, we have the Level 2s installed. You may require, uh, you may remember from last year, they're at Carlson Field, the South Shore, South Shore Country Club and Station Street, so this would just be adding to Lynch Field and Station Street. Um, the reason that, as I mentioned, you might see one port listed instead of two ports for a station, even though these stations will have two ports on them, you can't charge a vehicle at the same time and they'll actually be different connectors, because some cars, uh, need a certain connector on a DCFC station, so this will just make sure that no matter what you drive, you can pull up and use that station. Um, so that's why I think in the license agreement, it says 11 ports. The early rendition of this presentation said 14 ports. That's just because the number of ports would technically be 14, but the number of usable ports would be 11. Um, so I'm happy to go back or, or explain anything further if there's anything else you need, but that's the, the short and simple.
Tom, anything to add?
No, Brianna did a great job and, uh, we're just looking for your approval so we can, uh, get these projects started.
Great, um, Brianna, so the, the stations that we currently have in town, which I was very happy to support last year, uh, can you tell us about their level of use? Like, how much are they being used by residents? And, uh, I was kind of curious to see how popular they are.
It's, it's been ticking up. I think we have at least 100 uses on the stations as a total. Um, Station Street is definitely the most popular location by far. We have gotten some uses at Carlson Field and the South Shore Country Club, um, but Station Street is over two-thirds, maybe more, of, of the total usage of the station.
Great, and we currently have, how many down there now? We have, so we have two, right? You said, you said two, we're going to add two more?
Yes, yep, there's currently two Level 2 charging stations there.
Excellent, great. Any concerns with the charging station during, you know, we've had some pretty, we've had two weekends of some pretty significantly cold weather. We dropped below, uh, zero at some points, particularly in the evening with the wind chills. How does that impact these charging stations?
It shouldn't impact them. Um, we purposely went with flow chargers before because they're based in Canada, so they're well-known for withstanding very cold weather and insane temperatures. Um, and so that's why we, we think the equipment is very well-equipped for any weather we can throw at it. Um, and I haven't had any issues of, say, snow falling and blocking the stations or people from charging it, but we've also had a very generous winter so far.
We have, yes. I think today was our, um, most significant snowstorm of the year, so far. But, you know, it's great to see this. Yeah, well, it is for us with our budget. I think this is wonderful. Uh, I really applaud your work, Brianna and Tom, for, you know, pushing these forward. I know a lot of residents, um, are moving toward, uh, charged vehicles and I think this is great. So thank you for doing this and I think it's wonderful. So let me see if Liz has any questions or comments.
Yes, thank you, Brianna, and thank you, Tom. Um, certainly appreciate you pushing these forward, um, and getting us closer to our, our, our goals, um, related to sustainability and net zero. And, or, maybe this is a question for you. Obviously, parking is limited downtown, the Station Street Lot is limited. Have we heard any feedback that we're losing, you know, kind of general parking to these EV station parking spots?
I'm not aware of any feedback.
Okay, okay, and Brianna, you mentioned the Level 2, um, charging stations. Will those eventually become obsolete and be replaced by the Level 3 or?
I haven't seen projections that those will be. The Level 1 charging stations are definitely becoming obsolete, so we're glad that we haven't proceeded with installing those around town as opposed to Level 2. Um, the equipment is continuously evolving, so even the, the Level 3s, we're going to be installing 50 KW systems. They go up to 150 now, which is like 10-minute, 15-minute charging, but it's a huge draw on the electric grid still.
Sure.
Um, which is why we're going with the 50 kilowatts so that it's not as much of a demand issue and we don't have to install as much extra equipment, transformers, things like that, that, that you'd have to see, um, in the parking lot and along the roadway. So there's, there are, the equipment is definitely evolving and I'm sure we will get to a point where all the charging stations are, you plug in and maybe it only takes 10 minutes, but we're, I don't think we're quite there yet in the, in the near future, at least not in the next three to five years.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign two license agreements with Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant for the installation of direct-current fast electric vehicle chargers at 226 Beale Street, Lynch Field, and 62 Water Street, Station Street Parking Lot.
I would second that motion. All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm in eyes, while the motion carries. Brianna, Tom, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work with HMLP, appreciate how you do.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, um, is 223 Annual Town Meeting Warren Article Discussion. Tonight, we're going to be taking up Article AA, which is the Route 3A Sewer Project and Potential Use of Federal Funds. So let me turn first, um, to Randy Sylvester. Randy, good evening. Are you there? How are you, Randy?
Good, how are you?
Good evening. If you could just state your name and position with the Town for the record?
Uh, Randy Sylvester, DQW Superintendent.
Excellent, well, thanks to join us. If you could just tell us a little bit about this, um, this request, Randy, that'd be great.
So this request is for, uh, the Route 3A Sewer Project, um, and an engineer, for an engineer to go in and, uh, evaluate the, the gravity main, um, and, and the existing, um, force main. He's there to evaluate it and, um, engineer it. The force main and the gravity main is, and it's end of life, it's 70 years old or pretty near to it. Uh, we've had main breaks, um, every other year. It's, the cost of repairing it is up over $50,000 a break, at least it has been the last two times it has broken. So we have a, the force main, which is, we got a CZM grant, um, and we had to match 55,000 and the total cost was 220,000. They went and evaluated the main and did all the engineering, so we have a project to go, but we want to get the rest of the project done and the rest of the, uh, the main in 3A, because of the age, we want to get it evaluated and engineered. And this money is for that purpose.
Randy, thank you. I know we have with us Clark Frazier, who's, uh, on our Sewer Commission. Clark, do you want to come up and add to Randy's presentation? Good evening, Clark.
Yes, can you hear me?
You're fine, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Uh, yeah, Clark Frazier, uh, 50 Bonnie Brier Circle in Hingham, in the Weir River District. I put my glasses on because the notes are all hard to read. Uh, Randy covered the, the main motivation, which is the age and the condition of the system, which is not totally known. The, if we go through the program, you mentioned that, I wanted to, also JR's here, if there's any other questions. This system represents about 85 to 95% of the flow. Almost everything, uh, from the North Shore District goes through the force main and then the new developments, uh, from Avalon and, uh, down around Beale's Cove and Back River have increased the load on this part of the system, which is part of the reasons why we, we see problems with it. There's a history where it was a 2017 bond issue, I think that was, and we were supposed to do three mini projects. One of them, the relocation, the most important is relocation, uh, at Stoddart's Neck to straighten the line. That still has not gone forward. We're still waiting for DCR easement. I'm hoping we'll get that by the summer. So the Sewer Commission voted nine hundred thousand for engineering and to be paid off bonds for the ratepayers. Part of the force main study was also a sustainability study for the Broad Cove Pump Station. And that will have to be some of the connection, all the connections between that and the new force main will have to be engineered and any changes to piping and so on and so forth. And any other thing that we find along Three-A Corridor. There's also the potential, I hope a strong potential, to get some federal funds out of the, that were voted a couple of years ago by Congress through Plymouth County. And so I understand the town will help us with the resources to chase that money, to get that money to reduce the cost to ratepayers. Because ultimately, this will be a major project. As early as next year, we would be back with, it could be between, I, I, I hope you're sitting down. I just want it between thirteen and fifteen million dollars to, to do that work. Now, so if we get the federal grant, we'll reduce the cost. And we'll have basically a brand-new system from Broad Cove down to Stoddard's Neck, which is a good percentage of the problems that we have with the system. In order to help justify this cost, we'll have to later aggressively chase infiltration and inflow, which means extraneous water in the system to try to reduce our costs with MWRA and the potential to cause damage to the rest of the system. So I just want to make this quick. And are there any questions? Any thing I haven't covered?
You're asking for approval for nine hundred thousand, correct?
Nine hundred thousand for the engineering.
Financing would be bonds to be paid off by ratepayers.
Yeah, and there's any, there's a possibility that there have to be some early work related to this project within, before, if we bonded next year, we wouldn't have the money until then. And if there's anything that has to be done at the pump station as part of this project, I assume that we could use any money that's left over from engineering for that.
And you met, the commission met this morning, Clark, is that correct?
Yeah, we, last night.
I'm assuming you voted.
Yesterday, we voted.
Affirmatively to do this.
I don't know whether you got the handout or the map. It's on there. And I hope I don't have to read the warrant article.
You don't have to, no, you don't have to.
I just, just want to make sure that, understand that this is something that's essential, that we move quickly. The other thing to note is that anything that delays this could cause, right, could result in significantly increased costs and the potential for having to do repairs, things that we otherwise won't have to do. And Randy assures me that with the new pipe, it'll be a small, slightly smaller pipe, but a lot less friction, so it'd be more efficient. And should last this for fifty years or more.
Clark, thank you, thank you very much. Let me just turn back to Randy real quick. Randy, is, I mean, how exigent are the circumstances here? I mean, are we gonna, can we, you know, engage in this, this, this study this year and then the work next year? No concern, I guess, with you and leadership of the DPW with waiting?
So what's your actual question? I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
How dire is the need? Like, I mean.
How dire is the need?
Yeah, I mean, Clark brought up a concern with, hey, we can't wait too long here. Do we, do we have time to take this step this year and then the bigger step next year?
Yes, we have that time. Will there be another main break? I don't know. We've done quite a few things to mitigate that. We've had a mild winter. Usually, we get them in the winter because of the, of the temperatures in the soil. But I don't think we're going to have one. I think we have the time. I think it should be done right with the engineering and an engineering study and to get a, get a construction-worthy plan and drawings out there so we can put the project forward, and I think in two thousand twenty-four.
Great, thank you, Randy.
It doesn't have to be all at once either. It could be phased in.
Right.
Gravity, the force main, and then the gravity.
And Clark, I know you mentioned, I think you referenced ARPR funds. I'm glad to look into that for you to assess to bring the cost down.
Yeah, we definitely need to work, look into that. And the other thing that keeps being a concern is a particular urgency in the, on the gravity system is the, the right angle turn down near Stoddard's Neck. But now, it's been six years since the bond issue recently passed, and the condition of that may or may not have significantly deteriorated. And that's, we won't know that until the engineer does the full study. And they've got a better hydraulic model that suggested that the system may not be as efficient as we had thought and may not be able to stay within an eighteen-inch pipe, eventually point four inch. But that's, at this point, until the engineer can fully complete the study, we don't know for sure.
Great, Clark, thank you. Is there any questions?
I have one other, one, one other thing to say is the HDPE pipe going in is going to be good for about a hundred years, if not more. So it's gonna be substantially longer lasting than the, than the current reinforced concrete pipe that's in there now.
I was gonna ask about that, actually. So that the life will, will be closer to a hundred years than, or fifty years.
Closer to a hundred or more years.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Clark, for sharing the necessity. Certainly, the age and the condition of the main is concerning. I do think it makes sense to do the engineering study first and the next phase. I know we've looked into the ARPR funds, and I think it will qualify at least some portion. So that's something that we will work on. Is there any dependency or coordination that needs to happen with the Route Three-A project?
I'm having a difficult time hearing you.
The, the larger Route Three-A construction project? Is there any sort of coordination that we have to do with that or any dependencies?
Not, not at this time. We, we do, we are waiting for the permit for the mass DOT for the force main. Would have to go through the permitting process for the rest of the main, depending on the design.
Okay.
Could I just say one thing? Now, I did, I checked with the, the Public Safety Facility Committee, and they weren't too concerned about the impacts of traffic on, on them either. But I do have, with traffic management of the section between Shipyard Drive and, or, and, or Fattler and down our avenue will have to be a concern so that the Public Safety Facility can work if it's in operation while we're still in construction.
Okay.
But that can be handled. I just don't want to pay for extra police details.
Good, thank you.
No other questions, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions, comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I would take a motion to recommend favorable action on Article AA.
Second.
All of them favorite Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Clark, thank you for being here. Randy, thanks as always.
Thank you, thanks, Clark.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of proposed easement agreements with Hingham Launch Properties LLC, in connection with the Public Safety Facility at three-three-five Lincoln Street. Let's see that we have our real estate counsel, Susan Murphy, on the line. So Susan, good evening.
Good evening, how are you? Um, so I am here to speak tonight particularly about the easements with Hingham Launch LLC. They're, they own the parcel next door, which is where the Fresh Market is located. If it would be helpful, I can share a, share my screen and show an aerial image if the board would like.
That'd be great.
Okay, is every, can everyone see that plan?
Yes, looks good.
Okay, great. So just quick orientation, this is three-thirty-five Lincoln Street. Here is the outline, footprint of the building. This is Shipyard Drive to the east HMS Essington, which is not an actual street. It's like kind of an internal driveway within the shipyard, the MBTA parking lot. And then if you continue on, you get to the small traffic circle and come back out Shipyard Drive to the west side, apologize for that. The easements are color-coded in this way. The ones that are kind of this reddish, pinkish color is the easement that's being granted by the MBTA. That easement has been approved as to form. The MBTA is circulating it internally for its execution and approval process. And Tom and I have been in touch with all of the abutters that we are, are consenting to this easement. And those are all in process. One has already come in, and we're expecting to have more this week. And hopefully, we'll complete that MBTA easement process next week. The easement before you tonight is the one, as I mentioned, with Hingham Launch, which is owned by Samuels and Associates. And what you're seeing in kind of this green-blue color are the easements that are required from, from them. There's an existing cut-through for that service at three-thirty-five Lincoln. That's an easement that cuts through the back of the Fresh Market. Hingham Launch owns, it's very hard to see because of, it's only two feet wide on the ground, but they own this very skinny strip that runs between the property, three-thirty-five Lincoln and the MBTA property. And then they own this strip coming down here. So the, this parcel has easements that go way back, some to the shipyard, some to the eighties. And the process that was needed was to locate all those, particularly the subsurface utilities, figure out where they needed to be relocated in order to serve the new facility and then negotiate a relocation and modification agreement with Hingham Launch LLC for that various access drainage and water easements. So what will happen is the cut-through, this cut-through easement is being terminated, but these new, these new access points, which better serve the facility, will be granted in their place. The, this Essington, this is an easement that the town's getting both from the MBTA and Hingham Launch to use Essington, which is private driveway, as we mentioned. And this is a drainage easement that is serving the property. You see the drain lines coming in, and then shoots up this way. This drainage minute is being relocated and modified. And likewise, these water lines, some of them are existing but not documented. So those are being documented. And the same with here, these are water line easements. So I, I've been in conjunction with Tom and John Coughlin. We've been working with Samuels for months on, on the terms of the relocation and modification as between kind of the staff and lawyers. We're comfortable that the easement is in appropriate form. Samuels is also going through their own internal review and execution process as we speak. And so what's before the board tonight is a proposed vote to approve, approve the form of the easement in the form that was circulated to you in your packet. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Susan, thank you very much. I know you put a lot of time and effort into getting this squared away, so I very much appreciate it. Are you able to give us an update on where we are with all of the easements related to the project? And if you can't, that's okay, too.
Yeah, no, there's only, there's only, there's only two easement documents that are needed. This one is just between the town and Hingham Launch LLC. And if, if the board approves the form tonight, then simultaneously, they're already going through their internal process at Samuels. And so this one can get easily completed. The one with the MBTA, as I noted, the MBTA's counsel has approved as to form. That's going through their internal review and execution process. And Tom and I have been in touch with the, I believe it's ten-nine, nine other entities that are signing on, kind of consenting to cutting through this. This is a landscape easement. And the other property owners in the shipyard all have rights in the landscape easement. And so we are obtaining consents for these cut-throughs. And as I mentioned, one is already in hand. And then we have at least three others that have been promised this week. We hope more. And so we're anticipating having, you know, all of them in hand next, by the end of next week. You know, who knows? Storms, other things come up, we don't know. So, but we're very optimistic because everyone's committed to delivering them.
Great, that's great news. Thanks again for your, for your hard work here. Liz, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Susan, for all the work on this. I know it's, it's a lot of moving parts here, to say the least. So we're talking, tonight, we're talking about everything highlighted in blue, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and they're reviewing it at the same time. So obviously, if there are any edits, it would come back to us?
Yeah, well, I don't anticipate any edits, but it's been signed off as to form.
Okay.
So it's just, you know, different entities have different kind of processes for moving things through the execution. So we're not expecting any edits.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to the authority granted to the Select Board under Article One of the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty Special Town Meeting, the Board entered into the agreement for the relocation and modification of easements with Hingham Launch Properties LLC in connection with the Public Safety Facility to be constructed at three-thirty-five Lincoln Street, substantially in the form reviewed by the Board.
I'd second that motion. All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Susan, thanks very much.
Thank you, good night.
Have a great night. All right, I think Mary Moroney has now joined us. So Mary, we're gonna come back to Article Six, which is to consider approval of the petition for National Grid to install and maintain approximately one thousand six hundred and sixty feet of four-inch gas main in High Street and three sixty-five feet of two-inch gas main in Free, in French Street. So Mary, good evening. Do you want to speak to us about the request tonight?
Yes, good evening, sorry for the delay. Yes, National Grid requests to install and maintain approximately six hundred, sixteen hundred and sixty feet of four-inch gas main in High Street and three hundred and sixty-five feet of two-inch gas main in French Street. The gas main in High Street will originate with the project that's also going on, on High Street in Waymouth, which is entering Hingham at the town line and continuing easterly on High Street to, to house number two-eighty-one High Street. And the gas main in French Street will originate with the new main in High Street at the intersection, continuing northerly in French Street to the limit of the work near house number eight French Street. And the gas main will be, will be replacing four-inch BSL dating back from nineteen thirty-two in two-inch coated steel and BSL main from nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen forty-two.
Kiar, do you have any, anything that I add or any concerns?
Good evening, I, JR Fry, Town Engineer. Again, I do not have anything to add at this time, nor do I have any concerns to raise with respect to the project. That's all.
Thanks, JR. And Mary, I guess, am I right that one of the ages of the mains is above ninety, ninety years old? Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any questions, Liz?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mary. What is the ideal age? I'm assuming ninety is quite old.
What is, what is the ideal age?
Yes, what is the expected life, like efficient life of the, the pipes generally?
We have actually pipe in the ground that's older. It just depends on the condition of the pipe and the leak history that went with it and the demand on the pipe. But at ninety-one years and fifty-five years, that's a long time to be in the ground. I mean, like I said, we do have older pipe as well. But we, we try to go around and replace the pipe under the DPU guidelines.
Okay, and has, has approval been given by Waymouth already?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. And I know it's, it's the responsibility of, of National Grid to notify the abutters. And I know it's the responsibility of National Grid to notify the abutters. JR, have we heard any feedback or do the abutters know about this yet?
The abutters are typically notified as part of the process for the here itself.
Okay.
And then subsequent to that notification, National Grid will be notifying them, I believe, two weeks prior is their practice, as well as within 48 hours, anytime that they're going to be working in front of their property.
Okay. And how, how long do you expect this work to take?
I, I think with, on the Hingham side, I would say when they start weather permitting, like a 12-week window, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, depending on the weather and what they encounter underground.
Okay. Okay. And when are you looking to start?
As soon as possible. If the grant is approved, then National Grid will apply for a permit. And the DPW of Hingham will work with National Grid and tell National Grid, you know, how many police offices, what time of the permit and the restrictions and what the expectation is. So, and then it will be scheduled.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And Mary, what hours do you generally do this work? Is it daytime hours?
I have been in the neighborhood myself, so where it is a residential neighborhood, I am sure that the town of Hingham will only issue permits for the daytime.
Yeah, I don't know if I see hours of operations in the, in the.
The hours of operation are standard construction hours, 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM unless they receive specific authorization.
Great, thanks, JR, appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item and requests for National, from National Grid to do this work?
We have someone in the audience.
Sure, come on up. Yeah, please come up. Can you just state your name and address?
My name is Rick Perino. I live at 6th French Street. And I'm one of the residents very close to the intersection. My first question would be to the town would be the traffic situation there. Very familiar with that intersection and the amount of truck traffic and pedestrian traffic. We've had some near misses there with children crossing the streets. So I wanted to bring that to the town's attention, being a resident of that area. And the high traffic on French Street, too. You asked a good question about the hours. That was my question as well, given the traffic concerns on that street. Since the railroad came into effect and impacted, French Street is very heavily traveled. Truck traffic with the contractors on that street, very heavily traveled. The street itself, French Street, is in very poor condition with the traffic on that street. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention and see what effort is being made to evaluate this effort. Has to be done based on the pipe, the age, safety concerns, but just making sure that everybody takes the time to look at this intersection and the French Street activity. I myself could be impacted tremendously because we're right there. And I believe the gas lines are on our side of the street where the sidewalk is. So that's another concern. It's a very busy street. If the sidewalk's going to be impacted, what efforts will be made to address those concerns?
And sir, and you're talking about the intersection of French Ward and High, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you that that is a problematic intersection. JR, I'm not sure if you heard Mr. Perino, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Perino's concern, he asked about the impacts of this, of this work being done on the intersection of Ward, French and High, which has, which is a troubled intersection and has been over the years. It's, the sightlines are difficult to see, traffic is sometimes moving quickly as they go through that intersection. Can you generally talk about how the police, if you can, how police details will help mitigate that and how they may address traffic in that area?
Yes, absolutely. The traffic will be managed by most likely one or two officers at the intersection as primary traffic control because I believe that the intention at this time, depending on what they encounter underground, they may change the proposed location of pipe, but they will be taking up a lane during construction. So there will be, I would anticipate a cruiser and an officer on the Waymouth side of work at, near the construction. And I would anticipate one or two additional officers at the intersection itself while, to manage the intersection while they're going through.
Does that answer your question?
It does a little bit, yeah. That's helpful, but I'm trying to address the traffic flow immediately at the intersection. He said at the Waymouth area, there's going to be a tremendous span there of traffic flow. And if anybody took the time to look at the traffic flow at key commuter hours, that's pretty extensive. I mean, to try to manage that, and I happen to know from previous work that was done at that intersection, there's a lot of utility pipes in that area, electric, water mains. So it's going to be a very challenging effort.
Great. JR, there may be something to think about is when looking at the timing, is taking in the commuter hour plus, I'm assuming there are probably walkers to Plymouth River School that might be impacted. So I know when other work has been done, we have taken that into account to not have the work done during arrival and dismissal of the school. So that, maybe that's something we can look at.
We can certainly take a look at what those impacts might be. And that'll be something that we work with the, that'll be something that we work with the police department on. They may specifically direct that work within the right-of-way stop for a period of time, but that will be at the discretion of the police department in managing the work.
Okay.
And JR, you know, Mr. Perino's point is a very good one. Maybe if you could just circle back with Sergeant Kilroy, he's in charge of our traffic department, and just see if there's any other mitigation that the police department might be able to suggest or offer to address Mr. Perino's concern and just general safety and, you know, around that intersection as it is. Without any construction, it can be a bit of a hairy intersection, but with all this work going on, it's going to become more problematic. So if you could do that, that'd be great.
Yes, I will.
Great.
As well, pedestrian traffic with the sidewalk.
Just to, to address one other concern that the gentleman had. French Street is on our paving plan. Right now, we're looking at, and we were just discussing this in our paving meeting on Monday, we're looking at a mill and overlay within the next, I would say, three years. And we're also looking at putting a fresh microsurface on Cross Street. Excuse me, on Ward Street.
Thank you. And Ms. Perino, if you have any concerns during the construction period, you could email us directly, Town Administrator or JR, and we will make sure. Any concerns, any additional concerns you might have might be able to be addressed during the process.
Okay. And when did they expect to start? Do they have any idea yet?
I think she said as soon as possible, but she didn't give us a definitive date.
Okay.
But you, you will be notified two weeks before it starts. So, not tomorrow.
You have some time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you for coming. I appreciate your input. Any, anyone else have any questions or concerns about this agenda item? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,660 feet of four inch gas main in High Street and 365 feet of two inch gas main in French Street. The gas main in High Street will originate at the, will originate within Waymouth, entering Hingham, at the town line and continuing easterly in High Street to the limit of work near 281 High Street. The gas main in French Street will originate with the new main in High Street at the intersection, continuing northerly in French Street to the limit of work near 8 French Street. The gas main will replace existing four inch BSL and two inch coated steel and BSL main, which are dated 1968 and 1942 respectively. The age of the abandoned main is between 55 and 91 years old. The approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated February 14, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
I'm in, as well, the motion carries. All right, thank you for your assistance tonight, Ms. Moroney and JR.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you. Before we, before we get to our 7:00 PM meeting, I am going to just address items 12, 13 and 14. We have no appointments this evening, is that correct, Tom?
No appointments.
All right. Any members of the public have any public comment this evening? If you do, just please wave your hand at me or raise your hand virtually on the Zoom. I do not see anyone. That would take me to Agenda Item 14, Town Administrator, Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Michelle, anything to report out this evening?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Or anything to report out?
Nothing this evening.
Tom?
Just to thank the DPW for their work sanding the roads for yesterday's, or this morning's snowstorm.
Great, yes. Select Board Reports, Liz, anything?
Just that I will be conducting office hours with School Committee Member Ness Corente tomorrow, March 1st, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
That's great. And I will be conducting office hours at the Senior Center on Friday from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Anyone interested in seeing me, just please sign up through Jennifer Young, who's coordinating a signup roster. And with that, I'm going to stand, stand in recess until we adjourn our next agenda item at 7:00 PM with the joint advisory committee, meeting with the advisory committee and the school committee and the capital outlay committee. So we will stand in recess until that time. All right, good evening. It is 7:06 on February 28, 23, 23. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called back to order. Next item on the agenda is a joint session with the Advisory Committee, School Committee and Capital Outlay Committee to discuss the FY24 Capital Outlay Committee recommendation. I'll let my respective chairs know that I've already read the language pursuant to Chapter 107 and our ability to conduct remote hearings. So with that, I would turn it over to the school committee to convene your meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Michelle Ayer chaired the school committee. I'm calling to order the school committee meeting of February 28, attending jointly with Advisory Committee, Capital Outlay and Select Board, adopting the same language read earlier. And I am joined via Zoom by my other school committee colleagues. And we do have a quorum. And Dr. Adams will be joining us by Zoom as well shortly.
Excellent, welcome. And I'm going to now turn to the advisory committee.
Yes, thank you, Bill. George Sanus from the advisory committee, and I'm calling our February 28 meeting to order. And I do not see anybody online, so I will note for the record that Jason Price is unavailable tonight.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm going to hear a presentation from the Chair of our Capital Outlay Committee. We do have Eric Valentine with us this evening. Eric, good evening. Eric, you're welcome to present from the table or the podium, completely your preference.
Here's fine, if that works.
Certainly works.
Okay, we'll jump right into it. So let's go, go over a quick summary of the capital process and then we can get into this year's capital recommendations. Go to the next slide. So this, the members are myself, Kevin Flaherty, Mike Donovan, and then from representing AdCom is David Lane Cooper and Jason Price. So the, the general bylaws are article of the Capitality Committee's mission, which states it shall be the duty of the committee to ascertain annually what capital outlays will be required by the town during the next five years. So to, in order to do this, each year, we meet with each department that is requesting funding for capital expenditures. And we discuss in detail each of the, each of the requests in terms of the department needs, as well as the overall town needs. And then we will deliberate as a committee and we make our recommendations for, you know, which capital requests should be funded for, for the current fiscal year. The, the town's financial policy states that the capital spending should be between 3% to 6% of the town's operating budget. As, you know, I think it's generally known, like, you know, we've been below the, you know, the policy range. And this year, from just the tax levy, we're hovering around 2.7% of the operating budget. If you include the additional 400K of potential ambulance receipts, then that pushes us into the 3.1% range, so it would be within the policy. And during our deliberations, we have this kind of criteria that we, that we use to guide us on our decision-making process, with the top three being the main, you know, I guess the biggest drivers was, you know, safety risk to the employee or the department. Is the capital item broken or is it core to the mission of the department? And you can go to the next slide. And so for the fiscal '24 capital recommendations, we have 2.8 million coming from the tax levy, the 499 potential override spending, and then the 404 of potential ambulance receipts or excess, or, you know, available reserves. And I believe everybody got the detailed plan by department that we can go into if there's any questions. And then just so everyone, you know, has visibility, the 500K of potential override funding is detailed in the next slide of what we would fund for those, for those items. I don't know if there's any questions so far.
Why don't you go through the entire presentation?
Okay. So then, yeah, the last and final slide is just a history of the annual capital requests and what we've been able to fund. So the blue bar is the annual requests by each department, and then the orange bar is, you know, what we've been able to fund just from the tax levy. So it includes, it excludes any warrant articles or, you know, non-tax levy funding. So as you can see, we, you know, we hover around 50%, you know, funding of capital requests each year. You know, as previously stated, the, you know, we've been below the, you know, the 3% to 6% of the operating budget on capital spending in the past. And, you know, from, from my view, it's, it might be a, you know, more channel view just coming from capital, but I think the town has kind of two options. It's, you know, you can, you know, follow the, kind of our recent practice of, you know, maybe not spending as much as we should on capital items. Then we have these large spikes, you know, every, you know, handful of years. Or we can, you know, increase the capital budget to better maintain our equipment. And so it smoothes out the spending, although, you know, higher, you know, every year, you don't have these huge spikes to catch up and, and, you know, get the town the equipment it needs. And that's it.
Thank you. Well, Eric, thank you very much. The question I've got is, obviously, we've been discussing the 500,000 a lot. We've discussed it on our board advisory, and I know has been talking about it as well, as it can be, it's going to add to the potential override amount. I know you've been on Capital Outlay a couple of years now and appreciate your service there. Is that enough? I mean, we have not really done a good job funding our capital needs over time. We've, we seem to be kind of deferring a lot of maintenance of DPW vehicles and other needed capital assets. What are your thoughts on that number? Is it, is it, is it going to solve the problem? Is it too little? Is it kind of right what we need right about now?
Well, so the, at least the, you know, I kind of grouped the 400 for the extra ambulance or available reserves, as well as the 500 override. So having that extra 900K has made a, you know, a huge difference. You know, in the, in the past, we've, we've had trouble funding some of the DPW equipment just because they're $200,000, $300,000, you know, for a truck or, you know, each, and they got a lot of trucks. So that has been a big help in, in being able to fund, you know, I think two or three of the, of the big DPW purchases they, you know, require. And so, you know, so, you know, based on this year, it seemed like if we had additional million each year, that'd be fantastic and help us catch up. And so, you know, any additional funding is, you know, well received and. And so, you know, any additional funding is, you know, well-received and definitely needed. And I think, you know, we need to, we need, we need to keep funding capital more just to catch up, because the, you know, the backlog, I look, I look at the backlog as the four out-years of our five-year plan. So I think it was like fiscal '19 or fiscal '20, it was, this is just from the tax levy. It was around like 15 million, now it's closer to 25 million. And so it keeps growing each year, and so the, the longer that we don't do these kind of overrides or catch-ups, you know, to, to catch up on past deferrals, the bigger this, this, you know, this backlog is going to get.
Eric, thank you. Liz, any questions?
Excuse me, no questions. Thank you, Eric. Just to comment on that, I mean, I see the 500,000 as, as kind of the bare minimum to be in compliance with our financial plan. Also, I think we've, we've learned that preventative maintenance goes a long way, and investing in capital matters and is good for the town. And certainly preventative maintenance and investing and taking care of capital was mentioned in the master plan, so just wanted to kind of bring that up as a reminder. This is something the community cares about and said they care about, and it's very well documented in the master plan. So thank you for all your work there.
Great. Michelle, I'll turn it over to you to see if you have any questions on the School Committee.
No, I, I know we are a huge purveyor of capital outlay for our, for our six buildings, and appreciate all the hard work. I know they are really tough decisions to make, and I know we often have a large percentage of the budget that's provided. I, last night, we had voted, I think that will also help the capital outlay budget. If the budget is accepted, that we had voted to move 300,000 from technology that's historically been included in capital outlay, and finally move it over to operating where we feel it belongs, and then that would increase the capital outlay funding amount, in theory, by that amount each year. So we're hoping that helps a bit with keeping our, us able to be on top of the regular maintenance and repairs that we need across the town.
Thanks. George, I'll turn it over to Advisory.
Thank you, Bill. So Eric, I know you, you do have a five-year projection of future spending. And just on a sort of rough basis, every year, do you get a substantial number of new requests that had not been there the prior year?
No, I mean, the, the, I mean, I, I guess it'll depend on the year, so the, the department heads are very good at, you know, giving, giving us the best look that they have. There is stuff that pops up that they weren't aware of. But, but generally, you know, there might be an item that comes off or an item that goes on, but nothing too significant. I mean, I guess, on average, specifically to this year, was we added in the rec departments, the field study recommendations, and so they had included in their capital requests all these recommended field repairs over the next five years. And so in the numbers I referenced, I excluded that stuff because they're so large, they would have to be through a warrant article. But, you know, that'd be an example of, you know, something significant that was added, but that was more of a result of the study. So, you know, overall, the departments, you know, give us a very good picture of what's, what's out there.
Okay. So the numbers that you're representing, you think are a fairly accurate indication of what the backlog is or what the future spending might, should be if we had sufficient money?
Well, sorry, I may have misunderstood your question. I was, as far as accuracy of the numbers, those are just rough estimates. It's more what is out there that needs to be done.
Projects, maybe that's.
So like, one example is like the south school roof needs to be repaired, I think, in the next five years. And I think we have it in the five-year plan as 1.5 million, but that's been there for a few years, so I'm sure it's higher than that, but.
Fair comment.
Yeah. But, but in any case, so, so it's more just what's out there, and then we try and get a rough, you know, the best estimate we can.
But at least we have the projects identified.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Let me turn it over to my colleagues. Questions? I see no hands, no hands raised.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? If you could just wave your hand physically or virtually. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Do you have a question? Go ahead, Debbie.
So I think in terms of the amount, and I think, I think this was my third year serving as the AdCom person on capital outlay. This, the extra money this year is, I mean, it is amazing that I looked again today, and it's like, boy, Randy should be so happy, and everybody should be happy in one sense. But I think if, if the override goes and if this is part of it, it's still important to keep increasing the capital dollars each year. And so, because otherwise, we'll get, we'll just be backsliding in, in a way that's not good. So I think that's, that's important. And I do think that everyone that, that came before us really does try to prioritize what they really have to have, so that, you know, the trucks aren't falling down in the streets as they're driving through them or something like that. People do a really good job, but in some ways, they shouldn't have to be quite so. Well, this versus that, or things like that. So that's just as a comment.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Eric. As always, a great presentation. I had a question about, like, I'm, I'm very supportive of moving the 300,000. Having had three teenagers with Chromebooks, it's hard to look at them as capital expenditures. So, and then the other one being the ambulances being now kind of dedicating the ambulance fees towards the ambulances. Are there other examples in the budget that we should be collectively thinking about as a town of, of fund? Like, when you look at this, are there things like you think there's a better way to do this?
Well, I mean, the biggest one was aligning the ambulance revenue to costs. So that, that's nice that that, that's going to be done. I mean, would this be an additional fee? But the only thing I can think of is be, you know, if you charge like for the transfer station to throw, you know, for the bags to throw, then you could assign that revenue to the capital equipment to the.
But there's nothing that stands out that you're like, there's, there's an obvious.
No, I mean, there's, 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 you know, the kind of small noise where it's like, is this really capital item? You know, it's around 15K threshold, but probably is more operating, but we know all the department's operating budgets are maxed, so, yeah, it kind of puts us in a tight spot. But as far as ambulance to, you know, ambulance revenue to ambulance, you know, cost, there's, there's none other to come to mind.
I mean, I would, just as a, as a follow-on comment to that comment, though, I mean, if, if there are smaller items that should be categorized as operating expense that are in your budget, it's kind of masking on both sides the reality of the budget, right?
Right.
Like, it's, it's hiding, it's, you're not getting the full value of the financial policy on the capital outlay side, and we're not seeing the true expense of the expenses on the department side.
Right. And so we, we didn't fund anything below 15K this year, except for, I think it was 5,000 to the transfer station to extend the life of the forklift. And that was a, that was extending, extenuating circumstance where the 5K is extending its life. And, and Randy said he's not able to find a suitable replacement, so that was just preference. So we don't want to ding him on that in, you know, getting the most out of, of the equipment. But, but we did take a pretty hard line this year of anything less than 15K, we, you know, didn't fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy?
I was just looking at the number for 2025.
Yes.
And it's more than twice the total for '24. What, I mean, how do we address that?
The 12.7 million?
No, the total, if I read this correctly, was 23 million?
Oh, okay. So, so the 23 million includes 10.5 of, you know, self-funded expenditures. A lot of that is water company. They have, they have planned like, like a new water tower or some, so a lot of that 23 is in the self-funded of 10. We still have 12.7 coming from the tax levy. And within that 12.7, there's the recreation projects that would, you know, likely be, there's.
And the library, I think, is in there too, isn't it? The library, 1.6 million for the library parking lot.
Yep. 1.6 for the library parking lot, and then it would be, so like, three and a half. Well, three and a half for the rec department field, field projects, which would, you know, wouldn't come from the tax levy.
And the fire department is substantially.
Oh, I think they have like a 600K or 800K pumper truck. Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's what's out there. We just defaulted to the tax levy for the out-years because we don't know where the funding's coming from. You know, if, if, you know, to help the readers, we could put it in another category, to-be-determined category.
Are these outlays consistent with the, the capital outlay plans of the departments? I mean, George?
The recommendations?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the departments are really good at giving us their priorities of their requests, so they prioritize their requests. And so, you know, we, you know, we follow their, their desires, you know, whenever possible.
And are they pretty, pretty good about the five-year projections?
They are, yep.
Thank you.
I think just one other question or comment I can make this year, for the first time since I've been on, and I think the first time in a long time, usually, we rank things as we go through from one, two, three, or if it's an annual expense, things like that. In my experience, we've never gone, we've never even funded all of the ones. And this year, we actually funded some threes.
No, we didn't. Twos.
Twos, we funded twos.
Most of the twos, yeah.
Well, no, so, but that's the difference that $900,000 makes, is that you can start looking at, at some other things.
Yeah.
The fun part, if there's more money, you can spend it.
I just have a question. Sorry if I missed this. The 300,000 that we were talking about moving for the schools, is that still accounted here? It looks like it is.
Yes.
Okay. So that would be additional?
It'd be the, within the system, school, school system-wide section? That'd be the, what, major infrastructure and Chromebook replacements?
Okay. So that's what we're talking about, moving to operating?
Anyone else? Let me turn back to Zoom to see if anybody has any comments or questions at this time. If you could just raise your hand. All right, not seeing anyone. Eric, thank you for your presentation this evening and all you good work on the committee. On the Select Board side, I'm just going to make a motion to approve the FY24 Capital Outlay Budget as recommended by the Capital Outlay Committee.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the motion carries. And with that, I think we're done, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, while the Select Board is adjourned. Thank you.
You're almost rubbing that in.
Well, we just started six.
Yeah, you did start our one.
A little earlier.
Bill, I'm going to put the AdCom into recess, and we are going to reconvene upstairs in our regular room in five minutes or so.
Excellent.
To, I'll make a motion to adjourn the School Committee meeting. I'll have to do, I'll need a second from someone on Zoom, and I'll need to do a roll call.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ness. All right, I'll do a roll call. Ness?
Aye.
Carrie? Didn't hear Carrie, but I see her up there. I'll come back to you.
Sorry, can you hear me? Aye.
Yep, thank you. Matt? Nobody wants to leave.
Jennifer, you just have any trouble on beauty?
Oh.
I'm, I'm aye, too.
Thank you, Carrie. Ally?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. And then Matt?
Aye.
Thank you. Tim?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned as well. Thank you.